I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to meet the public at this time. Everybody who wishes to address the board may do so. If anyone wishes to address the board at this time, I will close this section of the meeting. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Members of the previous meeting, a regular meeting of April 19th and a special meeting of April 27th, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
Move except the matters threatened.
Second.
Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, by your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Excuse me, bills. You all have copies. Our sentence...
I made an revision to the recent receipt.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills as presented.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, both by your sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Course comments?
We have one letter that was received in today. It was addressed to whom it may concern. I am writing because I am concerned about the increased flow of traffic on Church Street. With nicer weather approach approaching, it's getting hard to keep the kids inside. There are several children who live on the street and there is also a daycare. As you probably are aware, we have a numerous amount of big trucks that are not taking Route 276, but traveling Golf Course Road instead. They then cut over onto Church Street and then to Pratt Street. I would like to have two "at play" signs put up, one on each end of the street. Also, if possible, could the village police please enforce the speed limits that have been set for this area? Thank you for your consideration in this matter, and it's signed by Holly Janet. We also have a letter that was received in today. It was from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. It was addressed to Mayor Rivers. Dear Mayor Rivers, please find me enclosed fully signed cooperation agreement between the Village of Rouse's Point and Department of Environmental Conservation. Upon 30 days' notice to the department, as provided in the agreement, the village and its contractors may enter onto the state lands involved for purposes of installing the wastewater treatment outfall pipe. The State's Office of General Services is in the process of drafting a permanent easement over the state lands for the village. I will keep you apprised of this also. It was a pleasure working with you. Do not hesitate to call with any questions. Sincerely, Scott Abramson, Senior Attorney, Office of General Counsel, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And that's all there is for correspondence.
Thank you, Phil. Report of mayor and trustees. First item, my agenda is to request an executive session to discuss contract renewals.
Please.
Roll call vote to trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. I have this proclamation to read. It's a World War II Veterans Recognition Day proclamation. It says, "Whereas on December 7th, 1941, the largest war of all times and the most defining event of the 20th century began, and whereas Americans devoted to liberty and to country courageously answered the nation's call to arms, summarized by President Franklin D. Roosevelt by the words, 'You bear with you the hope and confidence and the gratitude and the prayers of your family and your fellow citizens and your president.' And whereas it still believed today that the blessings of liberty required constant vigil and sacrifice, and whereas every man, woman, and child in the great nation owes a debt of gratitude to those who served their country so selfishly in the event that reshaped the world, and whereas these brave soldiers, sailors, marines, coast guard, and airmen were the beloved sons and daughters of our land, and whereas more than 400,000 Americans made the supreme sacrifice, laying down their lives so that others could live free, now therefore be it resolved that May 29th, 2004, as the nation's World War II memorial is dedicated, and our nation's capital, I declare this day World War II Veterans Recognition Day in our community. And be it further resolved that all citizens are asked to celebrate and contribute to the sacrifices of these men and women who replaced their lives in harm's way protecting American values and preserving democracy for the world. And finally be it resolved that the observance of World War II Veterans Recognition Day will promptly commemorate the history events and express the gratitude for those who gave so much for their fellow citizens." It was signed by me, and that will be presented to the Legion on 29th. And on the supplemental, I have a contract renewal for earth science. You all have copies. We've had this for quite some time since February. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Sign this.
Good.
Motion made by John Huckrow.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Penfield. Now, concerning discussion. There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote. Is it roll call? Roll call vote. Trustee Huckrow, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that's it for me. Trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is to request an executive session to discuss Public Works employee.
Motion made by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And I would request permission for the clerk to publish the legal notice concerning the publishing of the RFP on the downtown revitalization project.
Second.
Motion by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion?
This is the... No, is this just saying that we are advertising?
This is saying we are going to be advertising for consultants.
Okay, so if someone happens to pick this up in the paper, they can call us if they didn't see one.
They certainly can.
Okay, good. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the third item is to request an executive session to discuss the union contract. And I'll put that in all of the motion.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote. Trustee Huckrow, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's all. Thank you, trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
The first item I have tonight is an update on the sewer committee meeting that was held on Friday, April 23rd. John Carr was here, as well as Aaron Jarvis from his office. Doug Ferris was here, trustee Moore, myself, Tom, and Ernie from the wastewater treatment plant. And I think it was a very productive meeting. We got to see the plans in full scale. John went through everything with us. It really seemed like all of the involved parties are really working in the same direction regarding the project and the plan and the financing. And it seemed like with very few modifications, things were ready to proceed. So, I know, John, I haven't talked to you since then, but are we still on track for that?
Yeah, basically, since that submission, we made a small submission to the E C on the outfall sewer. That was made sometime last week. The plan modifications, basically, downscaling some of the projects and taking out unnecessary items and adding minor lower items. We've been working feverishly on those. And I'm pleased to report that they are approximately 95% complete. And as we discussed in our meeting, the sewer committee meeting, we were going to then submit these to the D C and the funding agency, E F C, for their preliminary comment. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you can't change a little bit afterwards, but we wanted to get their reviews underway and then hopefully sit down with the sewer committee either late this week or not next week, but perhaps the week after, just to finalize, keep the ball rolling, basically. I think we have a pretty good handle with what Tom and Ernie need up there. There's a few other methods and means to get what they need. We just wanted to know where they're most comfortable in cutting the costs. And hopefully, that project will steamroll right along. Kind of goes along with the water project, some of the discussions that we've had with the funding agencies. We need to define that scope as best we can, get it into them, get their village's application complete. With that in mind, with the funding application, get all their requirements and other items that they want to see into the project. Get those into bid documents and proceed on as best we can. A little bit of a holdup on some of their reviews, but certainly that's... You know, me and the mayor are pretty frustrated with some of that, but it's a necessary evil.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the bureaucracy of the state of New York don't allow you to move ahead.
So it's probably pointless to discuss the timeline then at this point?
No, I prefer we make that submission this week. I would suggest that maybe we could have a brief sewer committee meeting late this week, but it would probably be more productive a week, two weeks from now.
Basically after we hear from D C, right?
Yeah, I think the outfall issue is going to finally come together real fast, so...
And that's regardless of the letter that you sent out that we have to talk about. Sounds good. Is that it?
There's mine. Keep busy.
Okay, good. The second update that I have is regarding the meeting of the zoning board, which I guess was last Tuesday. Tom Renee was here to talk to them and to talk to myself and Mike Tatro about the last couple of local laws that they've been working on regarding the zoning changes and the regulations for adult entertainment businesses. Tom had some good suggestions on a couple of things that have been placed in the local law on the zoning changes. And we talked to them over with the board, and he's going to have the updates back to them, hopefully, for their main meeting. They're going to review it, sign off on it, and then it'll come to this board for the public hearing and passing of the local law laws. My guess would be probably not until four weeks. I would say not the next meeting, but the following. We still have plenty of time with the moratorium for subdivision plans and the adult entertainment businesses, so we should be in good shape for that. We also chose kind of a path put together for the subdivision plans that we're planning for, so he's going to be working on that as well with Mike Tatro. So things seem to be going pretty well in that direction to get those taken care of. And then the last update that I have deals with the issue that we talked about. I guess it was maybe the first meeting in March where I've been approached by the elementary school here about their bluebird box program. And apparently, I got an update this weekend from some members of the parent support group. They finished building them on Friday. And they'll be deciding at their next meeting different places where they can be. Apparently, the ones that they hoped to get to the village, the bluebird expert that came to help them drove around a little bit and really actually thought that this property, in terms of the trees and the foliage, would be the best place to put them. So I think we'll probably end up with either two or three sets of two. And we have instructions about how to put them off, and they'll be getting back to us after they have their next meeting. I think it'll be a really nice thing for the kids who actually built them to be able to come down here if they're playing ball or playing soccer and actually see them in use. So that, I should have an update on that at the next meeting.
Mosquito eaters.
I don't know if there's any mosquito, don't you? Because I don't know.
No, that's not... They're 14. But that's what I was... They will eat some. They will eat insects, insects eat it, but they're not known as mosquito eaters.
We didn't know more about that, no.
So you would have played with that for a lot of years or something. I just, I'm happy to hear that they're not going to place them near the road. Too many times they're put through the road, and the birds leave the net, the houses, they go off the road, they get nailed by a car at the end of the bluebird.
No, I think when you drive around, you felt maybe down, I don't know, maybe right here with the back of the park down at that end, and maybe some over there on the side. They have certain dimensions. I think that they have to be put up in pairs, 20, maybe 20 feet apart. There's a certain pole length that they have to sit on. And then between each pair, you need 100 feet or something. I have the dimensions in a packet that they have given me.
Who's put them up?
I would imagine a combination. We had talked at our earlier meeting, Public Works and Rec Center, I would imagine to work together on that. We'll know more about it when we get the specific instructions, but they need to phase away from the prevailing winds as much as possible, so maybe phase it east would be nice. I think it's a nice thing for that.
I think it's a great thing. Mr. Mayor, I think you might be thinking of purple martin's.
Hey, you're right. I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
They have bigger houses. They have bigger houses. Yeah, they do.
But they eat mosquitoes like we do.
We have to believe.
That's why, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Well, even if the bluebirds can clean up a few mosquitoes. Especially down here. And that's it. That's all I have. So I'll let you know more about that after I talk to them.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I got a few things. Remind everybody the village's cleanup day will be May 3rd through May 6th. Place everything by the curbside by 7:30 a.m. I'm sorry, remind the collection for bag flipping and the means only. And the next thing is the speed limit. I was approached by quite a few people about cars that went to the village awful fast. I know Bob Craig. And what we come down to is if we can change the speed limit to 25 to the whole south end, correct? Is there any 25?
Not all the south end, just...
Well, pretty much from Champlain, on the outside of Champlain Street. Smith Street.
The relatives are all 25.
Oh, they're 25.
Yeah.
Sorry, 25, yes.
Yeah.
You've got Rose Avenue at 25.
Montgomery.
The only thing you couldn't change is the state road, which is Champlain Street, Lake, and Pratt. So I'd make it into a motion that the village attorney draft a local law changing speed limit for all village streets with 25 miles an hour except Champlain, Lake, and Pratt, which are state roads. And the school zone would have to stay fine, correct?
The school zone would have to stay fine, that's correct.
And that's our motion. Second.
Motion made by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
I just, I have a question. I know when we changed the speed limits to 25 on some of the village streets, I know that we posted each of those streets. Do we then go, do we replace all of the speed postings?
No, what you'd have to do, if you choose to make all the village streets 25 miles per hour, my suggestion at that point would be to go to area posting. It would be, I would think, the least expensive. We have six entrances to the village. Those six entrances would have to be posted. And that would alleviate having to post every street. Each entrance would have a sign similar to, "You're now entering the village of Rouse's Point. Speed limit on all village streets is 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted." And the state highways, school zones would be posted at the recommended speed for them.
Could we then remove the other postings that we have now that are 25?
You could, but if they're already there, they've already been purchased, you might as well leave them up. It's just a secondary notification that, you know, that those streets aren't 25 miles per hour.
Because again, I'm asking it because I know in a couple of the zoning meetings, in particular when Dick Cravill was still on the board, so this was, you know, maybe six, eight months ago, they've considered a couple of different times at their meetings about what our signs in the village look like.
Right.
And how we could maybe improve... And I don't know, you know, typical roadside, they pretty much are what they are. But I know that they've tossed that idea around of how we could improve the looks of the village without having quite so many signs. And I know, I think even when we talked about the school zone on Maple Street, that that issue came up.
Right.
That it's kind of an eyesore if you have
That's right.
those speed and road signs. So to me, that would be an improvement if...
Most of Maple Street is going to be posted at 20.
For the school zones.
Yes. Because of the new distances that have been...
And your state highways would still have the 30 mile an hour signs there that build your state record, there's those state mandates.
Montgomery Street from the corner down to the corner to corner, right? Academy Street.
But can't be, when the school zone is actually posted, it's going to be pretty much from...
From Lake to the upper...
From Lake Street all the way to the upper end of Academy. Can be posted as a school zone with the new state regulations.
So you don't have a few side streets that keep state, pearl, white, actually you don't have to change them? You'd have two there already in the academy, so...
And again, if you choose to do that, if you go to the area posting, then it will alleviate posting the individual streets.
If it did pass, how long would it take roughly to go?
I would guess, I'm not sure, I'd guess probably fall or
Late fall.
Late fall before.
Just drafting a local law takes quite a while.
By then, junior, by then, most of the heavy traffic comes first of October. Will be gone.
Yeah.
It will be gone.
Yeah, so one, trying to weigh the difference, we've gotten quite a few complaints since deconstruction because there is traffic moving all through the village and people who go through here on a regular basis find their way through other streets, so it's causing additional traffic and additional problems on streets that didn't exist prior to and probably won't exist after. But again, if you choose to do that, that's your choice, whether you want to lower the speed limits.
Now, would this help with this lady on Church Street at the same time?
Yeah, that would be posted. That part of Church Street would be posted at 25.
Yeah, I don't know. Without talking with her, I'm not sure, and the weather, if she's referring to the trucks that are the speed problem. Because on that short section of Church Street...
How the hell could you do that?
You couldn't get the trucks up that fast. But again, truck traffic, we have over 3,000 trucks a week that go through this village. And truck traffic is, for the main part, being detoured to 276. But you have the stragglers that are trying to come down the Golf Course Road. The state police are out there, not all the time, but they are trying to enforce. And I know the town of Champlain is concerned about the heavy trucks on that road. They wave the punish signs, but you're having a few that are sneaking down through there. Which, again, the truck traffic on that street, I'm going to say will be eliminated once the construction is completed.
That seems to be true. I know I walk, and you know, my traditional loop takes me up around Church. There's a lot of frustration driving out there, too.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of frustration driving, not just trucks, but cars.
That's right.
New York cars, out of state cars. I mean, there's a lot of frustration, you can tell. You can tell from the looks on people's faces and you can tell from the way they're driving.
That's right.
There is, and unfortunately, it's the situation we have for the next few months.
You should go up there the other night at midnight, when the train went out, we had tractor trailers back right down past the Legion.
Oh, I know it.
They, and of course, it was a train going south, so it's moving at five miles an hour, so the act rail unit and the act rail cars, very, very slow. You wouldn't believe the language from the front row. They got their, it was a warm night, they got their trucks and they were congregating together, and they were not at the cameras.
We did a survey back in 94, 95, when we first got involved in the commercial vehicle enforcement to a greater extent due to the safety of these trucks coming to the village. And in 95, a conservative estimate is we had 3,360 trucks per week that came through this community.
I bet you got more than that, you know?
I bet you do, yeah. And the state averaged, the state percentage of trucks at all state details around the state of New York that are taken out of service for major safety violations is 40% on every detail. So you look at, on a yearly basis, we've got 175,000 trucks going through the village, and 69,000, 70,000 of them are traveling through here in unsafe conditions, unsafe brakes, unsafe coupling devices. So it's a major thoroughfare for trucks, and getting involved in the commercial vehicle enforcement, I think, was a good move. We have seen, when we first started this, we were taken 100% out of service. We're down now to about the state level of 40, 40%.
Can I ask you, Bob, and I don't know whether you know this or not, but you certainly would have a better chance than I would. Since this project on Champlain Street has started, both coming from Champlain, approaching 276, and also coming from down here, they seem to be changing the labeling and signing for the detour. Is there a reason for keeping, changing it?
When they, when they first started it, Parker Chevrolet complained because we had tractor trailer trucks pulling into Parker Chevrolet. They thought that was a 276 detour.
I get that.
So they...
I believe it. They planned over here.
We had Barn Street...
Yeah, and the driveway of a car dealership. I'm sorry, keep going.
We had Barn Street over here.
Yeah.
Down Barn Street. So there was complaints from the various people. So the DOT engineers were going around trying to replace the signs and reword the signs to try to get it down to a point where the majority of the traffic, the trucks coming through here, would take the detour that were posted there. So that's why they've been changing and moving them.
Because even coming from Champlain yesterday, they've taken out the light at sign. Now it's just one, you know, diamond shaped truck detour sign. Some just passed, I think, maybe just passed, or right across from Parkers.
Yep, they've got...
Right, right across from there. Yep.
The orange detour signing up just a little further, they've got another one, Truck Detour 276. And they've got truck, works on signs down 276. They've lowered the speed limit in front of the schools to 45.
Right, right.
But it's something we're going to have to deal with for a few months to come.
I personally don't think it's worth it to change the size to 25 miles an hour for just a few months. You don't have a problem after this is done.
Why are the other streets changed from 25?
That was because the children's playing in the streets up there and not because of the residential areas.
They play in the streets up here, too, not at all.
I mean, that was a request from them people. That's all housing.
Yeah, back when we did that, we had requests from all those people in the residential areas to drop those areas to 25 miles per hour. I know you had talked, we'd come in, you talked about Priscilla Lane. You had some... I know there is considerable traffic being detoured on Priscilla Lane. But again, whether you people choose to do that is your...
I just, you know, I can understand the frustration right now. I really can. But come, you know, this winter, and in the past winter, we, those streets up there don't seem to truck traffic. You know what I'm saying? When we got 25, that was posted basically because the kids were speeding, raising hell on the street. And they wanted to make it a little safer. It's going to cost us a lot to write a local law though.
Probably a couple, three, four thousand dollars.
And then change the sign for, you know, we got, what, this is May, June, July, August, September. Got five months.
It's a bad idea to change the road, Mr. Mayor. Especially, I'm concerned about Maple Street when it is...
Maples are going to be for near all 20.
But there are parts that aren't going to be, and even to get people to 20 is...
I don't know.
I think, you know, no matter, we, we tried to do as many things as we could to keep it kind of, you know, with the curvy, with the grass and the old things, but I'm still concerned. Before it was touched, I don't know, how you set the school, what kind of cars, you could hardly breathe though.
With the new...
Less than 20 are going so fast.
With the new state legislation allowing the increasing, increasing the areas of school zones, school zones, Maple Street will be school zone from the intersection of Chapman to Almost Pine, that whole thing will be twenty miles an hour. And then Academy will be twenty miles an hour from Lake all the way to the other end of Academy.
What would be the northern limits of schools all around Maple?
The north, the northern limit?
Would that be...
Chapman Street.
Chapman, Chapman Street.
I'm sorry, I...
You've got a stop, you've got a stop sign.
You're going south from Chapman to Almost Pine Street, that'll be all twenty.
I know, you know, put a stop sign in at the corner of Academy also here to go, it didn't seem to make an awful lot of difference on some people. And I know that, I know that you've been out there patrolling it. It seemed to smell, but then it alleviated.
We're never there when you want us, and we're always there when you don't want us.
I think through Chapman is another concern, both coming into the village and leaving the village.
Chapman and, yes.
Yeah, and I've seen a number of people go right through the stop sign on Chapman, especially coming east, yeah.
Academy.
Yeah, and the one, yeah, and the one on Maple, Chapman and Maple, so...
Chapman, yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a problem with lowering the speed limit. And I really like the idea of posting it all at the entrance, I think that's great.
Well, if you choose to do that, that would be the lesser expensive than trying to post every street, because if you didn't do the area posting, you'd have to post, you'd have to post every single street and both ends.
I like the idea of that area posting, I think that would be better.
The signage that we had put in neighborhoods is a little clumsy, but also necessary, the way you did it. But you wouldn't have to do that on the other areas.
No, no. And the ones that do exist could be taken out if you want, removed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, me.
I think it's a waste of money.
And, motion passed.
I've got some more stuff. Progressive branch from Mike Riley, Gary Moenska, attended two-day seminar, which will be held June fourteenth and fifteenth in Lobville, New York. This will provide contact hours toward operator's license renewals, the total cost of six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Any other motion, have them attend?
Second.
Motion made by Trusty Moore, seconded by Trusty Penfield. Any discussion? Any other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, one more thing. That's it. Couple weeks ago, we requested that Brian Gennell and Eugene and Claire attend a class, but that's been canceled because there's too many people. There's another one coming up, July fourteenth in Canton, it's a one-day seminar. I'll give a total cost of eighty-two dollars, if, have them make a motion, have them go to that one.
Motion made by Trusty Moore, seconded by Trusty Hockrow. Any discussions? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'm done.
Thank you, Trusty Moore. Phil?
I have nothing.
Oh, thank you. Our son?
I'd like to read a press release that just went out. Since commenced in June first, two thousand and four, the Village of Ross's Point Municipal Electric Department will again make available to residential customers of the system who have a two-year clear record with the utility, the opportunity to pay their electric charges by a budget billing arrangement. Based upon previous year's usage and projected per kilowatt hour cost, including supplemental power charge, a customer's annual electric expense will be estimated and then paid in eleven payments, with the remaining month, which is May, used to reconcile the underpayments or overpayments. Anyone wishing to participate in this program should contact the accounting department at the village office by calling two nine seven five five oh two, extension three one five or three three two, between the hours of seven thirty A M and four P M, Monday through Friday, prior to May twenty-eighth, two thousand and four. After that date, entry into the program will not be allowed until May of two thousand and five. All customers presently on the program will remain with a budget amount appearing in the top portion of their bill commencing with the June bills. This program is open to all residential customers who meet the above requirements.
That's all I have.
Bob?
Yes, I'd just like to give back to the correspondence from Holly Jeanette, and just let her know, or I will contact her and let her know, that we appreciate the fact of being notified when there's children, people move into the area, time goes by so fast, children grow and they become involved in more outside activities, so it's nice to know, parents are concerned about the traffic, and I will talk to Public Works, and they usually have those signs right in stock, and will sign both ends of that street, children to play. And we have been monitoring two seventy-six, Church Street, the area for speed. We had gotten a complaint in the past from D O T engineers who had received a complaint from some residents down on the north end of the trucks coming in. And again, it's a situation where they're not used to the truck traffic, now they've got a lot of trucks, and trucks appear to be a lot of times traveling faster than they are, they're bigger, they make more noise, but just to let, I'll contact Holly Jeanette and weathering all this, so...
Thank you, Bob.
That's all I have.
Just a few, couple quick things. Even though construction slowed down on the water project and is being stalled on the sewer project, you will see us around quite a bit more with summertime coming. This week, for example, we'll be doing a bit of work on behalf of the village with Ricky on the eleven project to make sure that there's certain things put in place on behalf of the village. Also, Carl Bowers back, he and Dale will be teaming up to continue the infrastructure project, infrastructure mapping project. And I walked with Dick Baker today from the beautification committee and understand that they need a little assistance with some cost engineering for some of what they'd like to accomplish with the state dock, they're looking at a boardwalk concept. And also, probably this week, we'll have some people swimming, we'll do the biannual inspection on the zebra muscle control pipe and intake screen cleaning, so, yes, we'll be busy and, no questions. Thank you.
That parking lot, Doug?
Yes, that too.
Yeah, I need to get, that's all I need to know for the state side.
Yeah, we did the survey on that, and I'll find, copy the plans and bring them.
We'll start cleaning that up.
Yeah.
We started, but we've got some more to do.
Yeah, I'll get that, that's on my list also.
John?
Nothing too much. Working with our son closely here, trying to finalize up the water project financing as well, it's trying to get the final bug out of the water project. Hopefully, that will be online. Oh, there is one thing that I shouldn't inform the board, I was, Doug had asked me to send some materials over to the village of Champlain in regards to their potential use of the your existing water tank. I submitted a couple of reports over there to a village trustee. The village D P W supervisor called me a couple of times, I just seemed kind of interested in, in fact, he's a nice guy. I told him I would send whatever I had on file, a little bit of information, and he was happy to receive it.
That trustee talked to me about it. I wouldn't say serious, but they are looking at it.
No, he seemed pretty interested, certainly had a good grasp of the complications on using existing tanks.
I wonder, can we expect that we'll have that new tank, it'll be online. As you know, we've got a nice old spec that's coming up this summer.
I would hope, and in the next two weeks, Doug, it's a very...
We're trying to get it postponed, but I don't know if we can. Okay, thank you. Open the meeting to the public this time. Anybody wish to go address the board, may do so. Nobody wishing to address the board, I would ask for a motion for recess.
Got it.
Motion by Trusty Hockrow.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Seven thirty-nine.